So, just for everyone in person and online. So, we are still working through the technical difficulties, but we will start the meeting at 7pm regardless. So, we do have quorum within the chamber. Okay, thank you. Councillors, I'm about to formally open the meeting, so I will request that the live streaming commence. Good evening, councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's planning committee meeting. I declare the meeting open at 6:56pm and I do apologise for the delay. We have some strict governance rules that talk about being able to see everyone in person and online, and I think we've just achieved that. So, thank you very much to the governance team and the IT team for helping us through that. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton. I'm the mayor of Darabin City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's planning committee meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I'd first like to start by acknowledging the Wondray Wawang people, the traditional owners of the land, and I pay my respects to elders past and present, and I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. In terms of membership, I'd like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us today. We have councillor Tim Lawrence, the deputy mayor. We have councillor Emily Demetriades online. We have councillor Gaetano Greco online. We have councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Lena Messina, councillor Susan Reddy and councillor Jolly Williams. Our officers in attendance tonight are Vanessa Petrie, the general manager of city sustainability and strategy. We have Chad Griffiths, the manager of city development. We have Jolion Boyle, the coordinator of priority development. We have Jack Allworth, the principal planner. We have Felicity Walsh, the interim manager of governance and communications. Thank you, and let's get underway. So, we have no apologies this evening, but I'll go to item three, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, do we have any conflicts of interest or interest to declare? No, and I will also welcome, we have our monitor Ross in person and we have our monitor June Anstey in, online. So, I'll go on to council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure everyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other. And as outlined in the governance rules, please note that councillors or any other person who addresses the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. So, we have item four, the confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. Councillors, could I please have a mover of the, for the adoption of the minutes of the planning committee meeting, which was held on the 12th of August, moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor McCarthy. I'll put that straight to the vote, all those in favour. That's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. And councillors, I'll be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. If I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. Before we continue, can I also request you ensure your microphones remain off unless you're speaking? We'll go on to item 5.1, consideration of reports, and we have the application to amend a development plan, Pod 12007-J, 105621140 and 1142 Plenty Road, Bundura. And we'll go over to officers to present the item, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. The proposal being considered is an amendment to the existing development plan, Pod 12007, or the Polaris 308-3 development plan. The amendments focus on a single parcel of land in the broad area covered by the development plan, specifically being 1056 to 1070 Plenty Road. The proposed amendments include removing previous use restrictions which prevented residential uses, like dwellings on the site, and also increasing the height of the buildings by one storey throughout the site to reach a height of between seven and 10 stories. This site is a large, thin parcel of land of approximately 4,038 square metres running along the southwestern side of Plenty Road and bounded by Main Drive, Copernicus Crescent and Galileo Gateway to the other sides. It's opposite Bundura Park and within a neighbourhood activity centre and has been developed generally in accordance with the Polaris 308-3 development plan. The land is within the mixed-use zone and subject to the DCPO and also to the development plan overlay, Schedule 1, which applies to the former Lorundal psychiatric hospital. As the amendment being considered here relates only to the amendment of a development plan, there are not the typical structures and requirements that do apply, for instance, to a planning permit. As such, the amendment has not been taken through the statutory notice process for which development plans are exempt. An informal non-statutory notice process was undertaken and one supportive submission was received. However, it is noted that the documents taken to notice were not clear about what was proposed. Aside from often appearing to show the previous small proposal, they gave no clear indication of the chosen uses, parking and traffic impacts, vegetation removal, overshadowing of the public realm and private open space and a range of other potential impacts. All of these matters are dealt with by the simultaneous permit application, which has been lodged, but which cannot be taken to notice. In considering whether the amended development plan is appropriate, we're accounting for both general merits matters and also specifically for the 6501 decision guideline on orderly planning. On that, the proposed development plan is considered insufficient to address the requirements for orderly planning and the development plan overlay. Councillors are strongly discouraged from adopting a piecemeal approach to considering development plan areas. However, the proposal's isolated amendments and isolated consideration of those amendments amount to a piecemeal approach, in our view. The earliest version of the development plan was well supported with extensive appendices and assessments of the impacts throughout the site and on the surrounding area. This substantial amendment to that development plan is not supported by a similar range of documentation, with parking, traffic landscaping and resident amenity not explored in sufficient detail, despite the potential for substantial off-site amenity impacts. Even setting this assessment aside, the proposed amendments themselves are insufficient to create a coherent development plan, with many apparent internal inconsistencies on basic matters such as height, access, parking and landscaping. Approving this amended development plan would create a document which cannot clearly guide development for the future of this site. On the proposal's other merits, many matters are concerning, though we would first highlight that the proposal does potentially include housing and retail space, which is positive on the site. Nonetheless, the proposal is inconsistent with the admittedly dated North East Corridor strategic plan. Whilst this is certainly not a binding document, it is a key component of the DPO, which VCAT has previously indicated is unable to be ignored. The proposal clearly fails to deliver the landscaping envisaged by the plan as well as the mix of active uses. The parking outcomes apparent in the proposal would also conflict with the policy for any development to provide for its own parking demand with onsite parking. The development plan proposed also does not secure the particularly high quality of urban design that was sought for this specific site because it acts as a gateway to the area. Moving beyond that strategic plan into more general decision matters for parking, traffic and access, the proposed development provides insufficient space for car parking demands that is likely to generate. The parking area provided will be substantially less than would be appropriate to meet the 5206 requirements for any subsequent permit application and would also be less than is required to meet the typical car ownership rates evidenced for the area by that census data. Certainly, the proposal does benefit from proximity to a tram route and is a 20-minute walk to Latrobe, but it lacks the access to a broad range of services, jobs and range of other public transport, which would be required to support such a substantial waiver in car parking. The amended plan lacks requirements for any amended permit to include suitably designed cyclist and pedestrian access also, and this poor response to the range of modes of transport by which it would be accessed is considered roundly unsatisfactory. The bulk height and setbacks of the proposal are also considered to be out of character with the area. They will be inconsistent with the urban character of most of the Lorundal area, which is medium density. It is also inconsistent with the character developing around it. Bundura Park is unlikely to ever be developed. Land fronting Plenty Road has a mandatory limit of just six stories along most nearby areas and most existing development along is lower. Separately, the land at Latrobe University is marked for heights of up to 10 stories, which would match the highest of the proposal, but with substantial open spaces around those buildings, large setbacks of the buildings and large setbacks from Plenty Road, which provides for the large native trees which will flank the Plenty Road section adjoining. The proposed, that the proposal does appear to be, the proposal does not appear to be balancing these influences, but rather goes beyond all of them, with no development along this section of the corridor having such a combination of height and so minimal setbacks or landscaping. The amended development plan also facilitates a potentially poor urban design outcome and mix of ground-level uses, which would not address the needs of the community which were identified in the original development plan. Considering all these matters, the officer recommendation is to find that this amended development plan is not satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jack. So, councillors, we do have one submitter who wishes to address the planning committee tonight in relation to this item. So, James, would you like to approach the lectern to address the committee? And you've got three minutes to speak, thank you.
Just three?
Let me double check. You have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Good evening, mayor and councillors. My name's James Golding, I'm the director of UPCO, planning consultant for the applicant Deal Corp, who's represented tonight by David Cobritz. To say the least, we're disappointed with the recommendation before you tonight, which is obviously to refuse this application. Whilst we lodged this application, development plan and planning permit application some 12 months ago, we were only informed of these concerns less than three weeks ago. Despite consistent engagement with council before we lodged the application, before it went into notification and the months throughout this year, we were not informed of these changes, not once. To summarise, the development that we're, the changes that the, the changes the development plan will facilitate will deliver 253 dwellings, inclusive of 12 affordable dwellings, on top of an active ground-level frontage to Plenty Road. The level of activation on Plenty Road is greater than the existing planning permit that exists on the site now. On any objective measure, the application we propose doesn't unreasonably impact the amenity around it in terms of overshadowing, overlooking and visual bulk. One of the concerning things that we find in the report that's been put before you is the weight that's been placed on the North East Corridor strategic plan of August 1998, document some 26 years old, yet we're placing significant weight on what that document has to say. The report says what we're proposing is inconsistent with that document, and I agree, but everything at Polaris, as it has been built and approved, is inconsistent with that document. To name two, where the activity centre is located is an entirely different location and all the heights in that document are different to what's been approved. Yet, we're putting significant amount of weight on that document. When Deal Corp got this site, some, what, 2008 wasn't it, David? They put the development plan in place that is there today. It is now 15 years old. A lot has changed in that time, and as the report points out, the planning scheme itself has changed 260 times, 260, not a typo. One of the things the report fails to make any mention of is the significant changes obtained recently to the planning scheme, which provides significant strategic support for housing in this location. That's namely, although this was mentioned, it's in a neighbourhood activity centre. Polaris is in a substantial change housing area, the very location where housing is encouraged to place at high density in your municipality. It also says this is a location for urban intensification. It's also part of the Plenty Road corridor, which again, through DDO 17 and other policies, encourages development of this type and scale along the corridor. It's also by council's own criteria a strategic redevelopment site.
James, shall I just get you to wrap up, please?
No problem. Where do we go? We're told that urban design is poor, that's in terms of the architecture. However, in April, I've attended a meeting with council's own urban designer, who said it was a great building, excellent design and was enthusiastic about it all and asked for some changes to be made to activation at ground level, which we've gone on to do. So, to hear tonight that urban design isn't supported is shocking. But nonetheless, that's what we see. And last but not least, ultimately, this is an opportunity missed for the city of Darabin to contribute to significant housing change at a time where Victoria and Darabin itself, with only 1% rental vacancy rate, needs housing more than ever.
Thank you. So, councillors, I will go to questions of officers regarding this item. Obviously, we did have some very strong statements from James, so is there anything that councillors would like to raise of officers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, through you, Mayor Newton, I'd just like to ask about the residential interface with Plenty Road and the use of above-ground car parking, or car parking that protrudes above ground. Was a critic of this previously. Has this lifting of the, my question is, has this lifting of the heights in those buildings addressed some of those concerns that Yarra Tram had around active interfaces, and particularly meaning the, the building near the supermarket, which had the most protruding car park coming out of the ground? And, you know, has these changes addressed active street frontage?
Thank you councillor, through you, mayor. These changes do not address that matter directly. There are not, I guess, to be specific, AHD height levels that are within the plans. They do still show a protruding basement, though, certainly. The degree of that, because there aren't exact levels on something like a development plan, that's admittedly typical, but the exact amount of protruding basement is not entirely clear, though there is some and it is unchanged. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence, did you have further questions? Please go ahead, you're fine. Do we have any further questions? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Chair. If we can just get a response just to the, the commentary as part of the submission in relation to the matter of which, in the assessment of this application, whether the North East Corridor study is relevant, which was a criticism that was made. It would be helpful for us to hear, I think, from our officers about why they, what their view is in relation to that particular point, given that that was a pretty central critique of the report that we have in front of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Jack, I'll go back to you.
Thank you councillor, through you, mayor. So, regarding the North East Corridor strategic plan, it is absolutely correct that it's a 1998 document that is now in the territory of a quarter-century old and certainly reflects a range of values which are no longer represented by many other aspects of the scheme that would relate to height, mix of uses and character, for instance. Nonetheless, we would refer, I guess, to the discussion that occurred in the VCAT decision in 2020, which essentially found that, yes, the document is clearly outdated, but there are decision guidelines within the development plan overlay that directly refer to it. There are information requirements within the development plan overlay that directly require it to be referenced. I would also note that whilst, yes, there certainly have been departures, there are also aspects of that plan which have been, I guess, realised. That VCAT decision was aware of the fact that development within the area has generally proceeded in the, what's called diversely, the new town or new urbanism style of design, which is typically low to mid-scale, maybe finer-grain urban development. It recognised that the large majority of the development area, or sorry, the area of the development plan has in fact been developed to that two-to-three-storey height, has included landscaping, has preserved much of the original heritage fabric, which was sought to be maintained, has preserved many, but not perhaps as many of the medium and high-retention value trees as were sought and has delivered an activity centre, certainly in a different location. And it's a location that's been found to be suitable, but yes, it has many of the core elements of the NECSP that have come through as they're required to do so by that schedule to the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy, did you get everything you needed?
Yeah, that was satisfactory, thank you very much for the response.
Thank you. Have we got any further questions? No, okay, so councillors, we will go to, oh yes, councillor Lawrence, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, just one final question through you, mayor, to the officers. I'm just looking through this and there's like over 36 fail to comply. And I'm just concerned when this goes to VCAT, are we asking too much? And, you know, are we gonna be, lose? And out of the 36, you know, I see, you know, six non-negotiable things. I mean, is, are we likely to have mediation or negotiation or shifting? And what are the highest six priorities out of the 36 non-compliers?
Okay, that's a big question, I'll go back to you, Jack.
Thank you councillor, through you, mayor. So, in regards to, I guess, prospects at VCAT, I won't pretend to be able to give any certainty firstly about whether this will go to VCAT nor whether we would be successful if it does go. We are certainly very optimistic. We think between both the, I guess, orderly planning issues and then the merits of the matter, and also guided by that relatively recent VCAT decision on the site just across Galileo Gateway. But yes, you're, you're right to recognise that there are substantial number of matters on which we currently have issues. I think many of them are potentially smaller matters which can be still addressed. They are uncertainties often, that the plan has not locked in an outcome that we would like. And in some, I won't have the number off the top of my head, but in some of those cases, because we do have the simultaneous permit application, in some of those cases, it's a situation where the development plan fails to be clear about delivering something that we then do actually get in the permit application. Nonetheless, there are certainly the very substantial issues of parking, of landscaping, of height, of the mix of uses and urban design along ground level. We would obviously try our very hardest to get the best mediated outcome that we could. I think parking is probably the hardest one to get past at the moment, referring not to this development plan application but to the current planning permit amendment. It is a very substantial waiver. It goes well beneath the typical rates of car parking ownership. We're told that this development is targeting the middle of the market and yet it is unclear how people will get to work because there is such a substantial waiver, so many dwellings without a single car parking space. So, that's probably our biggest non-negotiable. An improvement to landscaping would also be key. But those other matters we see as, I guess, more likely to be workable, particularly the urban design matters. It's certainly correct that there are positive urban design components as well as negative, and we think that the applicant can work on those.
Thank you, Jack. So, we'll close questions there and we'll move to the debate. So, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Lawrence, and do we have, seconded by councillor Rennie? Councillor Lawrence, I'll go to you for, you have three minutes.
Yes, as I said, I had voted against the original development overlay here because I had concerns about Yarra Tram's objection to this in terms of active street frontage to Plenty Road. That's very significant in terms of social safety and given what has occurred on their site previously, which for the sensitivity of family members, I won't mention. But also, obviously, you know, we've got a very well landscaped development that's gone on, that Deal Corp has developed around this whole area that respects the history, heritage and landscaping. So, those are important values in 1998 and important now. However, I think also now we're in a framework where there's surreal decisions being made, like 50 stories in Box Hill. And I'm concerned that the amount of compliances raised in this could cloud us actually getting to what's important. Because obviously, one or two stories, a couple of extra houses of a project that might actually happen, rather than being pie in the sky, needs to be treated with seriousness. But the issue of active street frontage to Plenty Road, the issue of bicycle and pedestrian access, landscaping remains important because we have a wonderful landscape across the road. And obviously, car parking also is at a premium because the uni itself creates pressure on the suburban areas behind Incredial Grange and Lancaster Gate. So, these are real issues. But, you know, I obviously feel I have to, can't vote against the officers' recommendations on this, but I also feel that this is a real project from a quality developer and is a capacity to get quality housing that people actually want. And I think we're in a very kind of dangerous time at the moment. So, this is not a 20-story development, this is not 50 stories, this is not some monstrous development. But, you know, I have to back the officers on this, but for me, really, the pedestrian access, bicycle access, public transport, landscaping and car parking, if we can improve that, then, you know, hope to see that come back to VCAT or be some kind of negotiation. But I feel we should be pinpointing out arguments about where improvement's possible, not just having this 36 noes. So, yeah, so I endorse the officers' report.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, I'll go to councillor Rennie as the second up.
Thank you, mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank the submitter for coming along and sharing their perspective. I think it is disappointing when a report like this comes as a surprise to people. And so, to that extent, I hear that the process has not been one that the applicant feels comfortable with. However, in the face of a recommendation from our staff like this, I think that we have a responsibility to make sure that we are planning with a view to the future in Darabin and what these type of developments look like, feel like and the amenity that they contain. So, I'm guided by our staff and their assessment that this plan fails in a number of ways. But I also feel as though these things could be resolved and hope that they do get resolved because I actually think this is a superb location for housing. I think it'll be highly desirable to people and I look forward to the day when something can be built on this site that provides homes to many, many new Darabin residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Have we got further speakers on the item? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, mayor. I'm not going to repeat the comments of, Thanks, Mayor. I'm not going to repeat the comments of the mover and seconder other than to sort of, I suppose, support the sentiment that I hold hope that some reconsideration does occur because it is important for us to create a housing opportunity throughout Darabin, including in the northernmost parts of Darabin, in this case, in an area which is ripe for a range of diverse dwellings. I think it's worth noting from a process point of view, though, that when we do have a really clear set of technical inconsistencies, reasons why council should not support the application, that council needs to... Or planning committee, I should say, needs to take that seriously. The proposal, the recommendation we have in front of us is not one ground in populism. This is not a matter of lots and lots of objections saying, don't do this. It's actually only one objection that's been noted in the report. It's actually a really strong and rigorous assessment by our officers, and I thank them for that. I also would thank the applicant for their comments and their feedback, and I hope that some way forward can be found. I would also just add that this application... Or, sorry, this matter and this development area has been, as part of council's work and business planning, for a long time. And I think it's worth recognising that this is the latest in a series of development plans and activities that's taken place at this site. And I think this is not the last time that this council will be dealing with this matter in some form. Whether it's... I don't expect it to come back to us at all in this term because there's literally days left of our decision-making time. But I would be not surprised if this is a matter that is returned. And so on that basis, I hope that all parties can find a way forward. I'd probably just finally say that, given some of the critique that has been included here in relation to the proposal, it seems as if there are elements of this proposal that can be thought through and given further consideration, and hopefully those conversations can happen in due course, and that all parties can find a reasonable way forward. I'll end it there, but just thank our officers for their work getting us to this stage.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Have we got any further speakers? No. Okay, so we'll go to the vote for this item. All those in favour? That is... Councillor, let me try to see you. You've got your in favour? Yep. That's carried unanimously. So the planning committee has decided to affirm the officer's recommendation to refuse the amended development plan, and the decision is not final. The applicant can appeal the decision at VCAT. And the process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the applicant. So we also have other business 6.1, the general planning information, the scheduled VCAT applications. So we'll go straight through this one. Do we have a mover? Councillor Rennie is seconded by Councillor McCarthy, and I'll put this one straight to the vote. So all those in favour? That is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. So we'll go to item 7, consideration of reports considered confidential. There are none. And item 8 is closed meetings. So there's no other business to consider at this time. And I'd like to declare the planning committee meeting closed at 7:28pm. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience in us getting started. Good night, everyone.